Okay, all right, well, welcome everyone. We will call regular council to order for February 26, 2024. And we'll begin by, I believe, standing for Oh, Canada. Come on, thank you.
(Music) 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 (Music)
Okay, thank you, Shelley. And we'll hand it over next to our CIO for the roll call of councilors, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. District One Deputy Warden Sean Sampson.
Present.
District Two Counselor Michael Dignan is absent with regrets. District Three Counselor Melanie Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. District Four Warden Amanda Moberghut.
Present.
Thank you. And District Five Counselor Brent Sampson.
Present.
The roll has been called, Madam Chair.
Thank you, CIO. All right, so we'll begin by requesting any items added to the agenda, please, and thank you. Are there any items to be added? Okay, so hearing none, we'll ask for an approval of the agenda.
I'm all for the approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, that motion is carried. All right, so the next item are the review of minutes. And the first minutes are from the Richmond Water Utility Water Rate Study Meeting, minutes of January 31, 2024. If there are no errors or omissions to report, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Sean Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. And the next set of minutes are from the regular council meeting of January 31, 2024. If there are no errors or omissions, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is question period. Question period in this case is restricted to items on the committee reports. And the committee reports, just for the information of, I don't know if councilors would have noticed, but also for the information of the public, those full reports are now available online well in advance of our meetings, so thank you to the staff for doing that. The number to call if you're watching from home is 902-226-9885. That's 902-226-9885. And if there are members from the gallery who would like to ask questions regarding to the committee, regarding the committee reports, they're welcome to jump to mic. And we'll just give that a minute. Thinking that's probably enough time has passed, hopefully, so, all right, we'll move on. Since there are no questions for question period, we'll close that and move on to committee of the, committee reports. And our first committee report is from Committee of the Whole, so I'll hand things over to Deputy Warden to take us through.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Committee of the Whole report for February 2024. The committee met on February 12, 2024. The committee discussed the request for proposals for the purchase and use of 19 School Road Evanston, Nova Scotia, PID number 75221366 and 75035865. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to proceed, as discussed in camera, with the request for proposals for the purchase and use of 19 School Road Evanston, Nova Scotia, PID number 75221366 and 75035865.
motions been made, could I have a second? Motion's been made, could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The committee discussed the Richmond Water Utility Water Rate Study. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole that the municipality of the County of Richmond apply to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board for changes in its rates for water and water service, fire protection to the municipality of the County of Richmond, and changes to its rules and regulations for customers served by the municipality of the County of Richmond Water Utility as set out in the Water Rate Study prepared by G.A. Eisner Consulting Limited in association with Blair S. Rooney Consulting Limited.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, that motion's carried. Over to you, Deputy Warden.
The committee discussed the voluntary vulnerable persons registry. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to refer the voluntary vulnerable persons registry to the Municipal Emergency Management Advisory Committee as an action item.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Second or?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed the requests from Sergeant Brad Kelly for access to data from the speed radar signs in Richmond County. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to approve the request for access to data from speed radar signs in Richmond County and further move that staff provide Sergeant Brad Kelly with the requested information.
Can I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried.
The committee discussed the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to appoint Warden Moberghut and Counselor Michael Dignant as members of the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee effective immediately and further move that the committee terms of reference be updated accordingly.
Could I have a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried.
This concludes the Committee of the Whole report for the month of February 2024, and I move its adoption.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion on the Committee of the Whole report? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee, and we do have a report in our package. Now, generally, I would hand things over to Deputy Warden again to read that through. Is that, no, or is, yeah, okay, maybe we'll hand that over to you, sorry about that, Brent, as a chair, to read that one through. We'll be back to you for bylaw policy.
Planning Advisory Heritage Committee Report. The committee met on February 20, 2024. The committee discussed the proposed amendments to the Central Richmond Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw to allow former institutional buildings to be converted into dwelling units. I move that the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee recommend to council to approve the proposed amendments to the Central Richmond Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw to allow former institutional buildings to be converted into dwelling units, where the number of units are not otherwise permitted by the zone in effect, subject to provisions of the Land Use Bylaw as outlined in Appendixes A and B.
Thanks, Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried.
This concludes the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee Report for the month of February 2024, and I move its adoption.
Thanks, Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second or?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, now, now we're back over to you, Deputy Warden. It's kind of like a bouncing ball there for the Bylaw Policy Committee Report, please, and thank you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The Bylaw Policy Committee Report for February 12, 2024. The committee met on February 12, 2024. The committee discussed the grants policy as amended. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Bylaw Policy Committee to proceed with the adoption of the grants policy as amended.
Motion's on the floor, could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried.
The committee discussed the sale of municipal property as amended. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Bylaw Policy Committee to proceed with the adoption of the sale of municipal property policy with the clarification of the term "nonusable" in Section 4.2d as discussed.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried.
This concludes the Bylaw Policy Committee Report for the February 2024, and I move its adoption.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Is there any further discussion on the Bylaw Policy Committee Report? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, thank you very much, Deputy Warden and Counselor Brent Sampson. The next item on our agenda is the motion to adopt. The first is the grants policy as amended, so we would need a motion just to that effect that the grants policy be adopted as amended.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, the next item is a motion to adopt the sale of municipal property as amended. Would someone be interested in making that motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any, could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on the sale of municipal property as amended? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. I feel like we're cruising right along here this evening.
Just waiting for the shoe to drop. I don't know where it's gonna be, but...
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the first reading. This is regarding amendments to the Central Richmond Secondary Plan and the Land Use Bylaw to allow former institutional buildings to be converted into dwelling units. So the motion we'd be looking for on this item would be to give first reading approval for the amendments to the Central Richmond Secondary Plan and Land Use Bylaw to allow former institutional buildings to be converted into dwelling units, but also to further move that staff schedule a public hearing on the matter.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll make the second, please.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sampson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the second reading. This would be a motion we would be seeking this evening would be to give second reading approval to the municipality of the County of Richmond Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second on that, please?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Is there any further discussion on this item? Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, no, just getting back to discussions earlier when we had the presentation, I just don't feel comfortable at this time based on the Hamlet Core and, trying to remember the other Hamlet.
Hamlet Residential.
Hamlet Residential and Hamlet Core zoning, just between Lordways-Sampsonville and River Beaujouin, the differences there. I, I think I'd much prefer to see Hamlet Core on all of them. I think Sampsonville makes perfect sense. The other two would allow it to be a little bit less restrictive with some small industrial uses. And I, I think it's major enough, I'd rather see that before going forward, as well as some of the signage questions we had.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Is there any other discussion on that item? Counselor Melanie?
Yeah, I, I mean, as discussed, I guess, at the public hearing, we did talk about how we could, we could also approve the Land Use Bylaw and Municipal Planning Strategy and then look to amend those documents if we found that was necessary. Maybe do a little bit of public consultation on that if we felt it was necessary or... I would be inclined to move in that direction only because, like, we do have some deadlines, I think, to, that, you know, we would, we would not fall within, I think, if we pull it back out, because if we do that, we're gonna need to, if we're gonna do the public consultation and then we're gonna be right back to step one, which is first reading, the public hearing, and again, through the process, so I don't see us being able to get that done before the end of the fiscal year, and my understanding is that's kind of our deadline. So I, although I appreciate Counselor Sampson's comments and think that we should explore that, I would be more inclined to proceed with the document as presented this evening.
Thanks, Counselor Melanie Sampson. Deputy Warden, did you have any other comments on it?
Yeah, no, I, I tend to agree with Counselor Melanie Sampson. I think if we're gonna push this through before the deadline, and then I also hear the concerns of Counselor Brent Sampson, but, yeah, if we can push it through and then, you know, have some public consultation and some engagement and have some discussions on that matter, then, yeah, I think that's probably the best approach. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Yeah, and I think, appreciate your comments as well, Counselor Sampson, I, you know, I think there probably could be other items that we find in, in this as well. It's brand new, and so we do need to, we do need to start somewhere. I'm wondering, Troy, if we could kind of leave it with staff to... I'm wondering, Troy, if we could kind of leave it with staff to consult with EDPC about potentially looking further into that as we go down the road and maybe scheduling some specific consultations, you know, to find out what the public is thinking and if they would prefer some changes. It might also give us some, you know, in that first few months of the Land Use Bylaw being in place, an opportunity to really get some good feedback because it's being applied, right? And encourage also staff to, you know, if they're running into situations where, you know, the public is finding it too restrictive, to bring that back to council immediately so that we can adjust on the fly and make exceptions when necessary, just recognizing the newness of this. Okay. Okay. All right, any further discussion on that item? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thank you, folks. Okay, the next item on our agenda, we have one piece of new business, and it is a proclamation request. And I would like to thank the CAO for sending me a little note on pronunciation today. I did also Google it. And so I guess it's to proclaim the month of March as amyloidosis awareness month. So the proclamation has been provided in the package. Procedurally, what we've done in the past with these is I've kind of read it through, which will be a challenge this evening, but I will do my best. And then, if council is okay with that approach, we'll make a motion to approve the resolution. So whereas March is amyloidosis awareness month, a month dedicated to raising awareness, funding, research, and supporting those living with amyloidosis and their loved ones. And whereas amyloidosis is a group of diseases that occurs when an abnormal protein known as amyloid builds up in the tissues and organs of the body, left untreated, the disease can result in organ failure and can be fatal. And whereas amyloidosis can mimic the signs and symptoms of more common medical conditions, and the disease can be challenging to diagnose. And where amyloidosis often affects people who are older or middle-aged, however younger people have been diagnosed with the disease. And whereas some of the signs and symptoms of amyloidosis can include shortness of breath, weight loss, fatigue, swelling in the ankles and legs, numbness in the hands and feet, foamy urine, carpal tunnel syndrome, bruising around the eyes, and an enlarged tongue. And whereas early diagnosis can lead to better outcomes for both patients and their families. And whereas raising awareness about all amyloidosis diseases, including hereditary and non-hereditary forms of the disease, can contribute to the building of healthier communities across Canada. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Warden, Amanda Mubrakat, on behalf of Richmond County Municipal Council, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as amyloidosis awareness month in the municipality of the County of Richmond. Could I have a motion from council to approve that proclamation, please?
It's all moved.
Thank you, Councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, so we are moving on to correspondence, and the first piece is action required. We have a letter from Mary Beth Toussat, who is the co-chair of the SEPI Management Committee, requesting for the continued financial support of the Redora Lakes Collaborative Environmental Initiative, their 2024-25 notional work plan. So the letter was provided in the package. And I think generally with this type of thing, we have deferred to budget on it. So if council is in agreement with that, maybe we'll just pop an action item on it. So if I could have a motion to defer that to budget discussions?
I'll make the motion to refer the request from SEPI to budget discussions.
Thanks, Councillor Sampson. Could I have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, I think that motion is carried. So the next several items on the agenda are several pieces of correspondence. So it was support letter writing day, obviously, month, whatever it was, for me. But I wanted to also, I guess, the first item is the Nova Scotia Planning Conference. Just wanted to acknowledge receipt of the email from Jacob Ritchie, who is helping to plan that annual event. Sounds like they've rejuvenated it and just, he was encouraging staff and councillors, if we were interested to attend. I'll be away those two days, but very much hoping that they all have a great outcome, so. And then there were several letters of support. One for Friends United Foundation, two letters of support for the Friends of St. John's Centre for the Arts, one for just general facility upgrades, and the other was to apply to the specific program called The Next Great Save through the National Trust. And then a letter of support for accessibility funding for the St. Peters Village Community Hub. And I think that was it. Okay, so, any questions on those items? Provided for information purposes. The next is the review of the action items, so we do have a list that was provided. And any questions on that? Okay, so hearing none. There were no items added to the agenda, I believe. So we will move on to our final question period of the evening. This question period will be a maximum of 10 minutes and also restricted to the remainder of the agenda following the committee reports. And again, the number to call is 902-226-9885. That's 902-226-9885. Or folks can come to the mic if they have, if there are members of the gallery who would like to ask any questions. We'll just give that a minute or two. Yes, absolutely. We'll just get you to state your name and your question. Off you go. And I could, if you could get you to put the button down on the, yeah, that would be great. Yeah. Yeah. There's a process. It's so our viewers at home can hear as well, right?
There we go. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Thank you, council. My name is Matt Whitman. I moved to beautiful Discous in 2020 during COVID from Halifax. And I'm pleased to be a homeowner on Isle Madame. It's great to be here. My question, I'm looking for an update on the Port Royal Bridge issue. I've heard from many residents that are concerned and are looking for a solution after many years of patiently awaiting a fix. They aren't confident about a status quo McKecon Road solution. I see machinery arrived on site today, you're probably aware of that. What's being done by the municipality to save this important piece of infrastructure?
Well, I guess a quick answer is that this is a provincial piece of infrastructure, so the equipment wouldn't be deployed by us. I don't believe we have anything in the region, Matt. And also, should begin by saying thank you for your question and for coming in. I definitely have heard some concerns from the community as well. But at the end of the day, I mean, the best that council would be able to do, I guess, would be to write a letter of support and, I guess, you know, to the province. But I think before we would do that, we may want to hear from, you know, some of the residents in some kind of, you know, I don't know, is there a group? Is there like a community group or something like that that?
Yes, there's a very strong Facebook group, for sure, with, I think, close to 200 members. And I know that this has been an issue since about 2017, and I'm sure there's been lots of time for letters to be written to the province and to the department and to the MLA. So I'm just wondering if there has been anything done recently or over the past seven years to help retain and repair this important piece of infrastructure in partnership with the province?
Thank you for reminding me of that. I did join the Facebook group when I found it, just so I could start to see some of the conversation. But I don't think this has come to council before. Councillors, did we hear about this early on, maybe?
Yeah, I think it was something that Councillor Dignant perhaps brought up previously. And I'm kind of racking my brain in terms of whether or not we did write a letter or not. Like, it might have been early on in our time on council. Again, I don't, I do recall it being discussed, but I don't recall what.
Okay, thanks, Matt, and thank you, Councillor Sampson. Did you, were you gonna say something, Brent?
Yeah, I think, I'm sure Councillor Dignant, I know, has brought it up in the past because it was, you know, a big concern even during the municipal election. Not that it's under our purview specifically, but, and then shortly after the provincial election, there was an announcement they were gonna replace it, but that didn't pan out, I guess, as the government changed. Yeah.
I think what had happened was people were mistaking a campaign promise for an announcement in that case. You know, and that's some dangerous territory because I believe the election was underway at that time. But, yeah, okay. So I guess the short answer is, I don't think we've had a formal ask. But if there is a group who would like to make an ask of council, then certainly we could entertain that, you know. But just knowing that it is provincial infrastructure, so we don't have direct control over it.
Thank you, and I'm aware that it's provincial infrastructure, but these are Richmond County residents that are concerned. And I'm not sure that there's gonna be a whole lot of assurance in a letter being written because there's been lots of times for letters, and maybe there was one written, but it just hasn't had any attention from the province. There was a tender for this bridge to be removed, and I believe the tender was for the end of February. And the machinery arrived today, which scares locals that this is going to be removed right away before any letters can be written and before any municipal partners can talk to the provincial government about assuring that this will be repaired. So I don't know if this is an opportunity for some sort of assurance that we can, the council can reach out to the province right away because the machinery arrived today and as early as tomorrow, this bridge could be removed.
I mean, it's no problem for us to reach out. Again, we haven't, like, if you're here on behalf of this group, like, specifically to make the formal request that we do that, then we can do that. I just would always want to manage expectations, and I know you were a longtime councillor in HRM, so you understand.
Yeah, so I think I could speak at least on behalf of the group to say that they would really appreciate a formal request that a letter be written to the province to get them to at least slow down and listen to the residents' concerns. And I know that residents are listening tonight and are tuning in and that hopefully the provincial representatives tuning in. And although it's been seven years, it's been a long time, and it's an important piece of infrastructure. The fix to go around McKecon Road isn't a safe fix for many reasons, including the sea level at that area and the no guardrails, the terrible potholes, the speed, the tough difficulty getting out onto the highway from there. So I'd really like, appreciate if you could at least put together a quick letter because the machinery's there, and I'm afraid that tomorrow there's gonna be some sort of work done that's gonna be unable to turn back after this moment.
Yeah, certainly, it's no problem. We could send a quick note following this meeting to the MLA and make sure that we copy in Minister Masland as the minister for that particular department, requesting that, you know, maybe they provide us with some additional information and what the route through McKecon Road, how that's going to be treated, you know, in their plan and considering, asking them to consider a slowdown. That's no problem.
Thank you, council.
Thanks for coming in, Matt. Okay. Are there any other questions?
Should we make, like, I'd be willing to make a motion to that effect.
Yeah, certainly, council.
So the motion would be to reach out to Melanie Redora?
To the MLA as well as the minister as soon as possible, based on, you know, the timing. I was not aware of machinery showing up today, but I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was there. I was there on the weekend and again yesterday. And there was no machinery when I was there, so that's a surprise to me that there was machinery there today. Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. I don't think my mic was on there. Okay, so, those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. And I'm not sure how long my mic was out, so just for the members of the public viewing at home, we have made a motion to write to the MLA and Minister Masland. And I'll do that this evening, so we'll take care of that before we leave. Okay, any other questions? All right, so there being no further business, we'll adjourn the meeting. And thank you very much for coming in, folks, and we'll see you next time.